So you haven't been covered for a month and a half or so.
So, I mean, I didn't even have the minutes from the board of events.
It's a battle, now we're going.
Can't be that hard to prove, I can't. That sounds really bizarre.
Call the Water Pollution Control Authority and Town Council meeting to order for Tuesday, November 1st, 2016 at 7:01 PM.
Start with smooth the flag.
The flag is to fly, the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome.
Mayor Duty?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Fawnin?
Here.
Councilor Angeloni? Councilor Arment? Councilor Candelora?
Here.
Councilor Diamond?
Here.
Councilor Manna?
Here.
Councilor Miller?
Here.
Councilor Rose?
Motion to approve the previous minutes of October 18th, 2016, Town Council agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Who's second?
Second.
She made the motion.
Mayor Duty?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Candelora?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Manna?
Yes.
Councilor Miller?
Yes.
Moving to the Water Pollution Control Authority Agenda. Be citizens' statements, correspondence, there's none listed. Unfinished business, request to connect to sanitary sewers, six acres, property known as 50 Clintonville Road.
Good evening. This is a follow-up to a brief discussion we had at the last WPCA meeting about a month ago. The request is to be able to connect a property at 50 Clintonville Road to sanitary sewers. Really, we're in the preliminary stages, but really, what they're looking for is finding that their intended use would fit into the WPCA's plans for the, what goes into the sanitary sewer system. Basically, what we're talking about is a six-acre parcel at the corner of Firelight Place and Clintonville Road. It's in front of the Norfolk Ice Pavilion and on the other side of Firelight Place from Firelight. It's a six-acre parcel. What the owners are trying to do, or in the process of trying to do, is basically construct age-restricted housing on the six-acre property. It's Zoned R-40, on the current zone, they have a matter of right, basically, one unit per acre can be constructed through plan zoning, again, it's a matter of right. There's a newly adopted zoning regulation that provides for affordable, not affordable, age-restricted housing. Basically, more of a cluster-type development if it meets certain criteria. One of the things that would have to be done is that that property, the R-40 zone, they'd have to apply that zone to this particular property, to the Plan and Zoning Commission, to get it rezoned, to allow them to do it. And then they have to go through the site plan special use process for the actual development. I believe the maximum number that they would be eligible for is potentially up to 30 units on that, 30 dwelling units on that parcel. That's not a given, there's, there's certain criteria that the Plan and Zoning Commission has to look at if it goes before them. Findings they have to make, I mean, that number could change, it could go to 15, 20, 25, something like that. There's some discretion of the Plan and Zoning Commission in terms of the actual number that may ultimately get approved for that property. All right, and then stepping back a little, two issues really that I brought up, one is the capacity issue. All this sewage from this site is part of the Section C area that discharges to the North Haven system. And we entered into an agreement with them, a revised agreement in 1997, where we asked for, and the agreement provides for about 400,000 gallons per day, average daily capacity into the North Haven system. Currently, in the past years, we've been basically discharged between 250,000 gallons a day up to about 320,000 or 330,000 gallons per day. The major difference is there, we have some, like any sewer system, infiltration, inflow, when it rains, high groundwater table. Even though the system's pretty new, there's always some leakage in water that gets into there. If you have a wet year, the number goes up, and these past dry years, our flows have been down. We've been well below the 400,000 gallon per day capacity that we have agreed to over the town of North Haven. I looked at the report I did in 1997, which is included in your handout. And I would say, I can't say 100% precisely, but basically, we're probably 90 to 95% connected in most of the Section C system. Most of that system, most of it along Route 22 in that area, it's been in for 30-plus years. Most of those houses connected over, you know, over the past 30 years. There's a few that may not have connected, and they, you get a few a year that connect to the system. But most of them connected. The White House system, which was constructed in the early to mid 1990s, probably 75% of that is connected. Rough numbers. Out of about 450 units, I'd say we're probably, 350 units are probably connected. We had initial, when they first went in, a lot of people connected, and over the years, every time a house is sold or something happens, they're required to connect to the sanitary sewer system by the lending institution. So, again, the, currently, you know, so, to summarize, over the past 10 years, we've probably put a high of 330,000 gallons per day in the system. There's not a whole lot more that's really going to connect to there. And we have provided capacity for the industrial property behind the Norfolk Ice Pavilion.
Yes.
We don't know what's going to go in there, but we want to reserve capacity for that. The estimated number is probably in the range of 20,000 gallons a day, depending on use. But it's industrial property using about 1,000 gallons per day. So overall, my initial look at it, there is some excess capacity. And really, the difference, they have a sanitary sewer lateral in front of that property. Under the current zoning, you get about six units out of there. They're looking for potentially up to, up to potentially 30 units. And that may increase the flow from about 1,500 gallons a day to about 4,500 gallons per day on an average daily basis, about 3,000 gallons per day, potential increase into the sanitary sewer system. And again, I, my finding is, the capacity exists. Always the unknown is what's going to happen in industrial property. They may, there may be a higher water user that wants to come in at some point. There may be a low water user that wants to come in. These are all variables. But it certainly looks like the capacity, 3,000 gallons per day is not a deal buster one way or the other. So that's one issue in terms of capacity. The other issue, just to give you some information regarding connection fees, because we do charge a special connection fee, any unit connected to sanitary sewers. That goes in our capital fund and helps pay for our capital costs. And as reported, when we adopted the sewer budget, that fund is pretty much depleted, pretty close to being depleted. To give you an idea, if they do 20 units, it generates about $50,000 in special connection fees. 30 units is about $70,000 in special connection fees that will go towards the capital fund. And really, I don't have a motion, but I was trying to have a discussion, and then based upon the direction of the WPCA, you could make a motion sort of off the table. Really, what they're looking for at this point is a finding that capacity exists for development to occur on that property in accordance with the affordable housing, I'm not, I'm sorry, age-restricted housing, it's not affordable housing by any means, regulation for up to 30 units, or a lesser number, I could throw that out. And then, again, that would allow them to go through the process of going through plan and zoning and applying for the actual zone change and then the actual development. I'm open to any questions or...
We would, if we added more capacity, it's going to cost us money though, right? If we had to up your capacity?
In the future, if we, we left, it's in the agreement with the town of North Haven that if we wanted additional capacity in the future, we could purchase it. The original intent at that point was probably, we identified some reserve areas off of Milltown Avenue when the sewers originally looked at back in the late 80s, early 90s. Burn Cliff area, some homes in there that we may want to connect in the future. Those are really the only targeted areas that we had. But if we wanted to sewer another section of town that could flow into there, that's not part of the overall plan, we'd have to provide capacity for that other area. The difference on this one is the property fronts on the sanitary sewer that was put in the 1980s. It was part of the original sewer service area. The difference is the density of the number of units. Again, when I, when I looked at it back in 1997, I was looking at existing zoning, you know, what it provided for. They're looking for additional units if they can get the Plan and Zoning Commission to approve their proposed development and their proposed zone change.
So how did you come up with the connection fee?
Based upon our sewer assessment regulations, it's $4,000 per unit for any commercial or age-restricted unit, and $2,000 per unit beyond that.
So it's written for an age-restricted unit?
Age-restricted unit. The finding is...
All right, so and how much is it if they, if they did their, what would you say the connection fee is?
It'd be $50,000 if they were to get approval for 20 units, and $70,000 for connection fee if they were to get 30 units.
Okay, and if we leave it alone, it's six one-acre lots at 12,300. So if we leave it alone, we're looking at a potential of $73,800.
Yeah.
You agree with that?
That's correct.
Okay.
The only difference I'm going to add is, and just sort of back into the zoning regulation. The regulation that they have currently provides for, or it's intended for, it's a transitional zone. If you're familiar with that property, there's, it's industrial, and the Ice Pavilion right there, this is the piece in front of it. When the Plan and Zoning Commission was looking at, they were looking for something that transitions between residential and industrial. So that was the concept behind the zone.
So, and so, did zoning, if I read this right, and I apologize for being late, I don't know what I missed. So did zoning, did they do another one of their, they created this zone just for this property?
Well, they created a zone...
So I did read that right, this is a, they did a brand-new thing?
It's a new regulation. That's correct. That's a new reg, that's correct.
Okay. So I did read that right?
Yeah.
Does this property owner apply for a zoning regulation?
The property owner was the catalyst behind and the whole zoning regulation change or amendment, that's correct. They haven't applied for a zone change because they would have to have a finding that the sewer capacity exists in there. That's one of the requirements of the regulation.
Now, what was the previously zoned, Curt?
Oh, it's currently Zoned R-40.
R-40, one acre lot.
You know, one dwelling unit for 40,000 square feet. And there's currently one home on the property.
Oh, that's that single-family home next to Water Way or...
That's correct.
So when you did all your math in the past, you were always looking at this as six potential sites?
And I was looking at anything that wasn't connected based upon the current underlying zone. We asked for about 380,000 in the North Haven, 380,000 gallons per day in the North Haven system. And again, I was trying to sort of go through the history of it, because it was quite a while ago. I think we went up to about 400,000 gallons, thinking, basically rounded up, providing a little additional capacity. And I think Montgomery Village came in somewhere around that time, and we made sure that we had capacity for Montgomery Village at that time. And I think that's how we got to 400,000 gallons a day versus the 380. And again, the number's a number, and it's, there's, it's not exact science in terms of trying to figure out capacity, but...
But is that our agreement with North Haven, they have to make available to us up to 400,000 gallons?
400,000 gallons per day, that's, we have an agreement with them, we paid for that capacity, that's correct.
We're already paying for 400,000?
We paid for 400,000 gallons per day capacity.
Whatever we, whatever we contribute to their system, we still pay for 400,000?
We paid for the capital upgrades to their plant, our percentage of the total design flow of the plant, which is about 10%, which is 400,000 gallons per day. That was the capital cost that we've been paying for the past number of years to North Haven.
About from our user fee?
From our user fee, it's based upon the meter flow. Whatever we discharge, and that's currently, that's around 250,000 gallons average daily in the past year.
So if I understood you correctly, if every property that is authorized to connect to that line in Birdland and anywhere else in the north section of town were to connect 100%, and this project was built with a maximum of 30 units were given by the Plan and Zoning Commission, we still would not have to acquire additional use from the town of North Haven? Our capacity would still be sufficient to service every potential property plus this project?
That, that's what I'm finding based upon what we're discharging and my estimates. And I have to just emphasize, 380,000 gallons per day was an estimate in 1997. Difference is, a lot of houses, they have, you know, they're putting low flush toilets. The water use consumption has gone down. I just have to say that overall, just the industry, we don't put in, you know, it used to be just flush everything down and a lot of water was a good thing. It doesn't happen anymore, so... What I'm saying, the numbers I estimated are probably conservative numbers back in 97 based upon the technology in place. New buildings, they don't, they don't use that much water. The consumption has gone down.
That's the water company's problem?
Yeah, that's exactly the water company's problem. They're not, they're not building enough water usage. And the interesting, I'm just going to throw it out there because it happens to us, not enough water. Enough, a lot of water comes to the pipes, the good thing from the point of view of it flushes the pipes out. What we've noticed in the, more recently, water consumption goes down, you get dry years, you have a higher likelihood of something getting clogged in the sewer system, and that may cause a backup. It just, it's happening everywhere. It's just what's happening today.
Okay. Anybody else? Any questions? Thank you. You need a consensus from us or...
Yeah, and like I said, I didn't write anything up because I just wanted to present it.
You're actually looking for a motion, not a consensus, right?
Yeah, well, a motion...
You want approval up to 30 units.
Yeah, I mean, and it's up to the WPCA regarding that. But that's my finding that I would say the capacity exists.
Yeah. The pecking order would be, we would provide that approval before they go to P and Z.
It's really, there has to be a finding that the capacity exists in the sewer system. They're going to have to come back, they're going to have to go to the Plan, wait, I see, they're going to have to go to the Plan and Zoning Commission to try to get the zone applied to that property. Then they would have to go to Plan and Zoning for the actual development, for the details, the site plan for that parcel. At that time, they would have to go to the WPCA to get a formal approval, whatever the number of units is, and then require that they enter into an agreement with the town stipulating all the conditions that we normally do for anybody.
Well, if we make a finding that there's adequate capacity for up to 30 units, and they get approval for 28 units, we're kind of putting ourselves between a rock and a hard place if we decide not to approve that 28-unit connection.
Right, I would think if you make a finding for whatever number of units at this point, yeah, it would only be for something that or less that they would be able, that would come back to the WPCA for all the detail that we normally do. But if you're making a finding that the capacity exists, they're taking that forward with that number.
Okay.
So why would we have to vote on it? You already made that finding.
Well, I think the regulations say that...
Why don't they just go forward, see what they can get, and come back and get the approval for the number they need?
I think the regulate, I'm sorry, I don't have it with me, I think says that the Water Pollution Control Authority has to make a finding or provide, or state that the capacity exists. It's something just so that...
But we're basing our finding on what you said.
At this point, yeah.
That's what we pay them for.
Curt, the maximum's 30 units?
The maximum they can get, my understanding is the maximum that they could get under the requested zone for that size property. Again, whether they ever get it or not.
But they're asking for it.
They're asking for up to that number. That's correct.
And it's age-restricted, it's age-restricted housing, it's not going to be something else?
That's, the regulation is age-restricted housing, 55 and older.
Yeah, you got, your memo, whatever, your memo says 25 to 30 in here.
Well, maybe they...
20 to 30.
Well, they do say...
Might have been, might have been a typo.
25 to 30, that's in their email that they sent me.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so you're looking to us for a motion to make a determination that there is adequate capacity under our agreement with the town of North Haven to add up to 30 units of age-restricted housing at 50 Clintonville Road?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. I'll make the motion so we can get it on the floor to discuss rather than agonizing over it anymore.
Second.
Second.
George?
Second. Discussion.
So just to be clear on this, we're just saying there's capacity for that.
Yeah, I think we've backed ourselves into a corner. If they get all their P and Z approvals and then come back here, and we say, you know what, we changed our mind, we've got a problem. So if you're going to go with this, I think you're going with the understanding that they could come back with approval for 30, and we've got to let them connect 30. This really is a P and Z issue, I think. I don't know that it's our issue.
I agree with you.
They've got to decide whether or not 30 units or 22, or whatever it is, is appropriate for that site.
As long as we're okay with the findings, right, from 1995?
Mayor Duty?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Candelora?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Manna?
Yes.
Councilor Miller?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Next one, there's nothing listed on the new business, citizen statements and petitions on water pollution control. I'm moving to reports, the boards and commissions, committees, boards and commissions. Economic Development Commission.
Since Dan's not here, the Economic Development Commission will meet on November 7.
Park and Rec Commission?
Park and Rec noted that Rotary has donated a Norway spruce for the holidays. It's been planted over on Forest Road at the Auger property. And Park and Rec's next meeting is November 22.
Thank you. Police Commission?
The Police Commission has not met since our last meeting. However, November 3, there are going to be interviews for the lieutenant's position.
We still have three candidates or are there more?
I think there are four. I thought there were four out of the five sergeants that applied.
Fire Commission meets Thursday. Board of Education, Town Council, Communications Subcommittee?
It has not met.
Yeah, but that's the, we're going to bring them together on the 15th at 6 o'clock.
Town Planning Goals Subcommittee?
Has not met since the last meeting.
Public Safety Communications Committee?
Public Safety Communications Committee met Wednesday, October 19. We had two guests that evening. We had Representative Vin Candelora and Captain Morgan from the Branford Police Department. Representative Candelora was present to talk to us about the bill and act concerning consolidation of public safety answering points. So far, that bill hasn't actually passed the House, however, not the legislature rather. However, that's, that money is available. There were questions about whether or not you could just do the 911, but that is not possible. You have to, if you're going to consolidate, it has to be the entire dispatch center. Captain Morgan from the Branford Police Department was very, very knowledgeable and very helpful. Talked about the technology, what they've been doing in Branford. I think there's a lot of potential for us in terms of, they have state-of-the-art equipment and capabilities that we don't currently have. But I think overall, the general consensus is right now, our biggest hurdle is the unions. And that meeting isn't occurring until November 28, 2016.
Thank you. Next is Planning and Zoning Commission?
Planning and Zoning has not met since our last meeting. They will meet next on November 3.
East Shore Health Commission, District Commission?
We met on Thursday to discuss with the union, the sanitarians, upcoming negotiations, salary and benefits, the contract is up. We're still looking to fill Bill Chody's seat, and it's come to our attention that instead of regional health districts, the state is entertaining a plan to make eight county health districts. Still, right, Mike?
Yeah, absolutely. It's one of the top bills that's going to be tracked in the coming legislative sessions. It is, it's going to pose a major challenge for all municipalities. And CCM has ranked it, I think, at the top of its list for this coming session. It essentially, the way it's currently crafted, the language is alarming in terms of the financing could, I think, quadruple what we're paying, you know, in terms of local...
And take away local control at the same time.
Take away, right, right. So it's a major concern.
Who's pushing that? CCM's opposed that?
No, I think unfortunately, driven from the commissioner without a lot of input from, it was just sort of developed in a silo, so to speak, and not really engaged within the municipalities or the health districts. So it's sort of driven by the commissioner, from what I understand, through CCM. So there'll be a lot more dialogue, and of course, I don't think the, what they envision in terms of financing will hold, but anything, it's an increase in any way you slice it, so it's a major concern.
Thank you.
Time for a public hearing.
All right, we'll move into, we have a public hearing tonight. The North Branford Town Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, November 1, 2016 at 7:30 PM in the North Branford Town Law Council chambers. The purpose of the public hearing will be their comments on the proposed ordinance 2016-1, which amends Chapter 88 of the Code of North Branford entitled Parks and Recreation Commission, Parks and Recreation Areas. Public comments on this matter is welcome, copied a proposed ordinance on file with the office of the town clerk and posted in the town's website, dated North Branford, Connecticut, this 19th day of October, 2016. Lisa M. Valenti, North Branford Town Clerk. Publication date was October 27, 2016, in the Sound newspaper. Any public comments on the proposed ordinance?
I would just hear you answer any questions if I have.
Want to give the camera a little bit of your...
Good evening, Roseanne Krajewski. I'm here representing the North Branford Recreation... Good evening, Roseanne Krajewski. I'm here representing the North Branford Recreation Department. That is a proposed change to our ordinance under our department, and, you know, we totally support it in conjunction with the Economic Development Commission, who could not be here this evening. So, but we're here to answer any questions you might have regarding it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing no comments, we'll close the public hearing. Do we act on it now or later?
Something's been run on the agenda.
Yeah. Yeah, so unfinished business. So we'll close the public hearing at seven-thirty-two PM. We'll move into the Town Manager's Report, memo from Kurt Weiss regarding expenditures for Verlan Reconstruction Project.
Yeah, you know, it's, Kurt wants to speak to it, but I know, I think he mentioned it before and then submitted the letter there, memo, just concerned about in terms of wrapping up the project and the, and the project costs, you know, are going to exceed in some areas with respect to inspections and so forth. So we wanted to make sure this was on your radar, and I know there's been a lot of, a lot of work, push as we get into the final stretch, so, but I think you might want to hear from Kurt directly and, you know, ask him any questions, but it's a project I think we're going to be very proud of once it's all, you know, finished up, but it's going to be more expensive than we thought.
Good evening again. Just to sort of, just to step ahead in terms of the progress on the project, basically, everything has been binder course. I think all the curving is essentially down, they're backfilling curbs. Today, they were basically trying to work their way out with the final course of pavement, and the hope is to be by the end of this weekend, done with the final course of pavement, and then it'll be essentially driveway work, miscellaneous topsoiling and guardrail work, and the likes will have to be completed. But TILCON has really done an amazing job in a relatively short time. I think I mentioned last time, there's three, many times four crews working on, in different parts of the project, in terms of drainage and driveway work, pavement work. Like I said, they've just done a fantastic job in a relatively short amount of time. But they work very long days, they work weekends, I mean, so there's a lot of time, you know, basically, four months of work took place in three months, and they're trying to get everything buttoned up basically by Thanksgiving at this point. I brought to your attention before that we had to do some, you know, changes in work in terms of, a little more work in terms of the road base because we ran into some unanticipated issues. Brought that to your attention. The inspection is going to go over, there's no doubt about it. We're trying, Fran and I are trying to hold that down as best we can. It's basically someone there monitoring everything, dealing with all the property owners, making sure everything goes in right and documenting everything. It really is a time-related issue. But I will say, it's a project I'm sure that the town can be very proud of. I think the neighborhood is very happy with, we've had a very cooperative neighborhood. I really think I only have really, two people I couldn't, we couldn't really satisfy during the whole process, and things were worked out all the way through, but it's really come out, there's a lot done in a short period, and it's, it's amazing. It's, we're very fortunate, we had TILCON in there, because I don't know if anybody else could have wrapped it up within the timeframe, just because they put a lot of effort, a lot of crews on it, and like I said, we're very happy with it. But for monitoring costs, I'll have a better hand in terms of that probably in a couple of weeks as things wrap up, and then I'll report back to you.
They had a real benefit of a dry year too, so...
Oh, yeah, I mean, everything, rain days were, you know, they're really, were comfortable on the way maybe that knocked them out, but it's been a great year for construction.
Thank you. Next is update on North Branford Intermediate School Roof Project.
Yeah, I supplied, put a memo in the packet for you, just kind of recapping where we are with respect to the project. So it's essentially in, we're in a scheduling holding pattern right now while we wait for Firestone to approve and get approval and schedule the work and get the equipment and, or materials, I should say, delivered to the warehouse, and once that's taken place, they'll get Eagle Rivet back on site and get that going, and Horizon Engineering has indicated that they'll have a start date in November. So we're just waiting for that work to be scheduled, we'll get to it. I did ask, or touched base with Bill Chody today to ask about the rain events that we've had, the recent rain events, and to find out where we've, where we stood in terms of water infiltration or leaks, and he indicated that very small leaks in the D wing, which is the part of the building we haven't gotten to yet. Everything else is held up, has been dry, there haven't been any other new issues, so, so far, so good. But again, all of these weather-related rain events are all different, so, you know, that could depend on the duration, the direction, the amount of rain and so forth, but so far, so good, and I'm just, you know, anxious to get Eagle Rivet back on site, finish up the remainder of the work that needs to be done for the membrane roof, and then also, I think, we'll have Horizon at some point later this month. So I just don't have a date for you, but it's, it's work in progress.
Before you get off that, Mike, on the, and I couldn't figure it out from the report on the insulation, the core, and it was like three and a half inches.
Yeah.
So my first comment is, that type of insulation doesn't shrink. So that tells me that, you know, we never had the four inches that was required. The second point is, you know, when they put the core in, did they hit the metal and it was three and a half inches, or did they, because if you, if you look at the section, there's, would have been another inch, and it was a half inch of siliconized, you know, sheet rock above and below the insulation. So the reality is, we should have been looking at five inches of material to the steel decking, and if you could have them clarify what they found, you know, that'd be, because, you know, that, where this roof is the one that's sweating, you know, we definitely would want to know, you know, is there, was everything else in place as well as the insulation? But we're already short a half inch of insulation and when, you know, so we're down, we're down twenty-five percent.
Yeah, sure.
We're down twenty-five percent. If we're supposed to have four inches, then we have three and a half.
Yeah, is it, I mean, yeah, I'll check that with Bruce. Maybe, I guess, is it possible that they could, that it's tapered in some way, and if they, if they...
No, we'd be down, like fifteen percent. I don't know. They said that this one wasn't tapered.
Okay.
So...
Yeah, I can check with Bruce.
I mean, we got, you know, we do have the issue there, so we want to make sure that it wasn't three and a half inches from the rubber roof to the metal. We want to make sure that the, we should have been measuring five inches there according to the through section.
Okay. Yeah, I'll have a conversation with Bruce and review that and/or Newman Architects as well, and get their take that, here are our findings. Calls for four and we got three and a half, find out why.
Because that's a very, that's a rigid insulation, you know, it doesn't shrink.
All right, next item is review of municipal fleet car fifteen.
Yeah, just, this is an item that just came up recently. You know, we're in a, we're in a bit of a situation where car fifteen is, had some issues with, with fumes and odors, so was, you know, taken to Public Works, and I guess it was a head gasket and not something that they can get to. So we're down a car at this point, waiting for the head mechanic to take a look at it when he gets to it, but there could be more issues beyond the, you know, head gasket. I don't know if this car, I'm going to ask the head mechanic or Fran's department to give us an, you know, estimation of what that cost is going to be, but at some point, we're either going to put money into it, which may be good money after bad, or we're looking at, you know, trying to get another decent vehicle somewhere off of...
Isn't there going to be an extra police car now? Are we getting a new police car delivered?
Well, yeah.
There should be two, right?
Well, in theory, but I think what my understanding is, what we're trying to do is, is to take one of those, push down to the K-9 officer, and then ship those to, to the, to the dealer that I think is going to give more value in terms of credit in the deal that they want to get than it would be for us to sell, and it's, I don't think it's, any of those are going to come offline here because they're too far gone. So that's why we don't have anything to draw from.
I just hope that credit comes back to the town.
Well, it's a good point, Mike. I mean, that seems to be the past practice or the pattern has been that, that those would come here, or the, or whatever we get, whether it's, you know, five hundred or a dollar, whatever it is.
Well, wait a minute, is money actually changing hands? Why don't they just reduce the price of the car we're getting?
Well, yeah, that'd be a good thing. I'm looking for the detail on that, and I haven't yet received that.
And I think one of those two cars might be able to be used for the town, for the municipal. I know the K-9 car is in bad shape, but I don't know about the other one.
Is it in worse shape than the car that the town has now?
Yeah, that's what I would think. We should, should look at whether it's, the cost savings is to take one of those cars and put it into the town fleet?
I was told, yeah, I think they're too far gone, may not be. I won't speak to that. I'll let Public Works and the mechanics speak to that, whether they're roadworthy or not, and how much it would take to pull either one of those.
I mean, if they're getting two thousand dollars apiece for the two cars that they're trading in, that's four thousand dollars. It's four thousand dollars that maybe the town could use to buy something used to replace car fifty.
Or one of those two might be, I think one of those two might not be in such bad shape. I know the K-9 car is in bad shape.
And now...
They're both in bad shape.
Well, the one car needs new transmission, that's about thirty-seven hundred bucks for that, and the other car is the, that's the one with the K-9 car with no bottom end. So whatever, car fifteen, we have to pull the engine out of it, but we're jammed up fifteen seasons now, so as soon as we get there, we're...
Well, how about the money we get for trade-ins on the two cars to use the thirty-seven hundred dollars to fix the transmission on the other car? Is that, is that worth it? I mean, if, how much are you, how much are you getting for trading?
No, you're mixing, it's one of the two cars they're talking about trading in needs a transmission for thirty-seven hundred bucks, not car fifteen. The only thing they know about a fifteen is it needs a head gasket, that's...
Well, as far as we know, we have to pull, we have to pull the engine out.
Do we know what the trade-ins are, the valid trade-ins are?
So until we pull the engine out.
I don't have that.
So what's the timeframe on pulling the engine?
Well, as soon as, I mean, we've got some work right on, that's...
I understand, just ballpark.
You know, at least in the next week or so, we're going to pull the engine out. But the question comes up, you know, whether you, the other car, will you do a transmission? You can't change a transmission because there are two different gears. I checked in that already, you know, one doesn't fit into the other one. You've got to take everything out and everything in, so it would be real, the whole car. So, you know, with the car, the car six, I think it is, or four, does it need a transmission?
Do you know what the trade-in value, you know what the...
I don't know, Mike, I didn't hear anything.
Mike, is there any way to find out what the trade-in values are?
Yeah, yeah, we're going to have to get, I'd like to get that.
How much could they be giving us for a car with a bad transmission and a car with no floor?
I don't know. Right.
Sounds like they're right out of Flintstone cartoons or something.
Yeah.
At auction, they're not getting, I think they got five hundred bucks last time.
Yeah.
The problem is the taxes in New York are not using them anymore. See, before, they used to take them for all the car parts, warranty and all that stuff, so they paid good money. But now, no. That's right though.
I'll find out what I can. I just wanted you to be aware that at some point, you know, where we can hold off, obviously, we will hold off until Public Works gets a look at fifteen.
We kind of run everything into the ground in this town.
Yeah, I mean, we're either, we're going to put money into fifteen, and we'll find out what the total cost is. I hope I have a number for the, for the, before the meeting on the fifteenth, and then we'll figure out what you, you know, what the prudent course of action will be.
Thank you. Next item is community events and presentations. Next item is citizen statements, petitions, and correspondence, correspondence regarding North Farm's trail. We have a letter from...
Yeah, there's a letter in your packet.
Deborah Kelly. I guess she was very impressed with the work that was done under the Eagle Scout project. Looks like signs, sturdy craps and bench, remove a huge tree blocking access to the bridge, and she's very happy walking back there. So, big thank you.
Can I also add a statement?
Yep.
Here for citizen statement. Today I had the honor of attending the celebration and ceremony for North Branford's Teacher of the Year, being the Connecticut Teacher of the Year. It's quite an honor, out of one hundred and sixty-nine towns to have the Teacher of the Year. It was a wonderful ceremony, the governor came to make the presentation. The entire school was there, all the students were there. It was a very, very positive event, and I think something that North Branford should be proud of. I know that the four finalists towns were, were a big number of towns and could have given us, gave us a lot of competition, and I think Lauren Danner should congratulate it, and she was wonderful when she spoke, and we should be very proud of that.
Says she's a biology teacher at the North Branford High School.
Yeah, I included a press release packet for you, you should all have that in front of you.
Thank you. Anything else in the citizen statement? Resignations and appointments, nothing listed. Unfinished business, discussion action, request to utilize town-owned parcel as access road at Maria Todd Road. Located at Maria Todd Road.
To follow up to the last meeting, I sent out a questionnaire to the residents of Maria Todd Road regarding, trying to get some input regarding their feelings on utilization of that parcel at the end of the cul-de-sac for an access trip to property of Andrews. There's three included in your packet, and there was, I think Mike provided one additional one tonight that handed out to you. Basically, I mean, in essence, they're all, they're all against it. I did forward them to Mr. Andrews as well, and the packet information and the like, just so he'd have the information. I thought he'd be here, but, but again, four out of, I think there were six of them, we received four, and they're all against it. You can read the details.
So do we have to take action on this, or?
I don't believe so.
Do we need to deny it, or?
I mean, it was a question, you know...
So should we say, should we vote on it, or?
I mean, it gives, it sends a clear message in terms of, you know, if you vote or make some type of...
A move to deny the request to utilize Maria Todd Road as an accessway for the Andrews farm.
I'll second that.
I'm sorry, was that...
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Any other comments, questions? Call call?
Duty?
No, yes, yes on the denial.
Deputy Mayor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Candelora?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Manna?
Yes, on the denial.
Councilor Miller?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Move on to approval of proposed ordinance two thousand sixteen dash one, amending chapter eighty-eight Parks and Recreation Commission.
All right. And I move that the town council adopts a proposed resolution ordinance two thousand sixteen dash one entitled Parks and Recreation Commission, Parks and Recreation Areas as presented.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call?
Mayor Dudi?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Candelora?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Manna?
Yes.
Councilor Miller?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Next, we'll move into new business, discussion in action, review of demolition bids for 1599 Foxon Road.
Yes, I prepared the packet for you and put the bid responses, the ten that are in there. Obviously, they were, well, pretty good result, I think, in terms of where we were with the original going off the state bid at two twenty-five and getting all the way down to low bid at one twenty-six. So, I gave you the detail there as well, in terms of how we broke out the bid, so that's where you can see the, all three items plus the alternative, as suggested by the council when we went into this process. So now we have a figure of one hundred and twenty-six, and I, I think, you know, the issue's gonna be the discussion as to whether you want, you want to go ahead and go proceed with that. The issue was, as we went through the process, with the notion of demolishing and any of the expenses would recoup through the sale of the property, that we had created the four oh one reoccurring count and non-reoccurring fund, and to cover those expenses, so that's one way you can proceed. If not, if it's going to be considered for open space and you want to demolish it and clear it as a park, I think you're gonna have, you're gonna be faced with looking at a different source of funding. But that's not to say you have to do that tonight. I think if you want to just focus on whether it makes sense for you, for the community, for the council, to take advantage of a low bid, or lower bidder bids than we had received in the past, and go forward and say, okay, yeah, let's do this, let's take the, take the buildings down. Because in my mind, if we went the way we previously wanted to go, which is to say, let the developer do it, they're gonna have a markup cost, and we know we're gonna be well over two hundred thousand. So I think the council made a good choice, and sending this out to bid and getting some really good responses, and one, you know, below us being one twenty-six, I think you proceed with, with knocking down the buildings and then figure out, down the road, where you want to do this, what do you want to do ultimately? Is it marketed? And again, I also want to pause, the next item is marketing, and Dan had asked to hold off on that one for the next meeting. So, you know, whether you market this and develop it, or you have it for open space, that can be for another meeting or down the road.
With regard to this bid proposal, what is the timeframe that we have to make a decision for accepting one of the bids?
Well, I would, I would hope that you would act tonight, because we've been, we've been holding the bid, and the other issue, the problem is, our own, our own ordinances dictate that we have to hold this for ninety days, we have to advertise for ninety days in terms of a historic, the back building being, having historical significance. So I would hope that you'd make a decision tonight of to move, and then we, we award, and then the developer under the process would go to file an application with the building official, and that's when they have this notice that they have to post for demolition. That's gonna hold up the whole project ninety days anyway. So, you know, whether you decide to develop it or to preserve it as open space is not something that's gonna happen right away.
But either way, it's gotta be knocked down.
It, I, yeah, yeah, it has to be knocked down, right.
I'll make a motion that we proceed with the low bidder, and figure out everything else later.
And it's a local guy.
I'll second that.
Can I just ask a question before we vote on that? Why did you, I understand why you have alternative one, loming and seeding, why you separated that out as to whether or not we want to do it ourselves, or have the contractor do it, but why did you have three different items that they bid on separately, and then their bid was aggregated into one lump sum? What's the point of the three items?
I think to some degree, we were, we were looking to see whether or not Fran and Public Works would be able to do, if some of these, if these numbers came way out of whack, and everything was above two hundred, we'd say, okay, if we took off the, you know, the demolition, or the, if you took off the disposal, or one of, two out of three, we'd see if we could lower the number.
Well, I guess that's where I'm going with this, because I'm looking at bid one, and they bid for item one seventy-three thousand seven hundred fifty dollars. Bid two, for the same item, bids twenty-nine thousand six fifty-five, however, on item two, they bid eighty-four, whereas bid one bid twenty-six thousand one fifty. They're like widely divergent in the areas that you itemize.
Or they confused one and two on the second.
Well, it's pretty much the same thing throughout.
You know what, Joe, all contractors have a number they want to get to, and how they get there.
So we can't cherry pick Cherry Hill, is what I'm, is what I'm being told, is that it?
Yeah, you, we, you can't, I don't, you can't break those bids up. We can't hire one for one thing and one for the other.
Okay, alright, just wanted to ask.
Correct me if I'm wrong, I've never seen that done, but I don't think you.
The other reason they did it, Joe, was just if, if they did the, all the contaminants out of it, everyone to see where that price was gonna be, it, it, let's say it was way out of range, and they did that, and we didn't have the buildings down, you know, versus just throwing everything out there, and there was concern about, you know, add-ons after, so.
The bids were good.
The bid was done, so it was, you know, they broke it down, but at the end of the day, all the debris was theirs, not, they're not gonna charge us for more asbestos, or...
It just seems bizarre that they almost traded figures on two different items. Okay. I still don't understand, but I'll go along.
But again, Joe, they all have the number they want at the end.
I suspected as much.
Yeah.
And what are we voting on? Is it items one, two, and three, or items one, two, and three and alternate one?
What's alternate one for five thousand?
Loming and seeding.
So where are you with that, Fran?
Well, we were tossing around, I mean, the seedings, no big deal for us, but I figured, let, put a womb in there, just have something grow on it, because we don't know, again, what we're doing or when. I mean, come springtime, they're gonna probably do this in the winter, I imagine.
Right, so in the spring, we'd have to do that.
But I don't want to just.
Leave it there, yeah.
As a matter of fact, we're gonna take the fill that's there, because I got, was a question right, Mike, about using the, the crushed material, the filler foundation up there, but we told them, everything's gotta go, I'm gonna push the hill into the foundation, just.
Whatever they, yeah.
So it just slowed it off, so, just so it's, we're not burying it.
Which actually, we'll make a bigger level area.
Yeah, so we're, we're voting then on a hundred and thirty-one thousand fifty dollars.
Yep.
Right.
Yep. I agree. So that's what my motion said.
One, two, and three, and at all.
Yep.
I guess one question, there was discussion at one meeting about some of the, there may be some historical things in one of the buildings or something, is that ship sailed, or?
Well, we're gonna, well, obviously, check it all out, most of the stuff hasn't been taken out, there, there, there's.
Like the tin ceiling and stuff?
Well, the tin ceiling's not, I'm talking about objects that were in there, historical sites.
But it has to be advertised for ninety days, maybe that could be, but, you know, then you gotta know who's going in there.
The tin ceiling's beautiful, but then, we're gonna get it out. I mean, it's probably just all paint, all blown up.
It's probably all lead paint on it, too.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so.
It's not worth it, yeah.
Yeah, it's not worth it.
Yeah, no, it's, it's a nightmare, it's lead everywhere.
Alright, so, we have a motion seconded. Roll call?
Mayor Dudi?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Candelora?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Manna?
Yes.
Councilor Miller?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
And next is RFP for marketing fifteen ninety-nine Foxon Road. Dan Armman called me today and said, table it, yeah, he asked to have that table, so we get a motion to just table.
So I move to table that?
Roll call?
Mayor Dudi?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Candelora?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Manna?
Yes.
Councilor Miller?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Next is update of underground storage tank at Stanley T., Ms. Community Center.
Yeah, just, we've made some progress on the, on the tank, and discussion for the tank at Stanley T. Williams, and there's a, if you recall, when we converted the gas here, we took out the tank that was at town hall, it was a two thousand gallon tank, went to Public Works, and we kept it, and he was reusing it. We're thinking to use that and put that back into service at Stanley T., rather than, and spending, I think the number was twenty thousand or something like that for, for a new tank, and have Public Works put that in for him, and save some money. So, we worked with, with the school system and folks up there to talk about whether or not that size would work, it would work, and have the personnel to do that. Now it's just, it's locating it, where to locate it, and we wanted to locate it, put it right by the, what is it, the chiller that's out there, Fran?
Right near the boiler room.
Yeah, near the boiler room outside, but because of the building code requirements, there's gotta be a five foot offset away from the building, so that pushes it unfortunately too far out and obstructs the egress of, of the entrance exit for the kitchen. So we're thinking of locating it on the back, on the, on the corner around the building, and just screening it off the corner rather than putting it out front, to, so we don't obscure the, the view for seniors, and trying to, trying to hide it in the parking lot area off the corner, so we're working, working on that. So, I mean, that's, that's where we're at. I know Fran's had some conversation, I think that spot will work in terms of, even though it's a further distance from where we originally wanted it, but that's what, that's what our thought process is at this point, to try and save some money to put that back into play and use that, and just have more frequent deliveries on, on the smaller tank, even though it's, it is definitely smaller, but it can be used, so. But I'm gonna defer to Fran in terms of, you know, the timeframe on that, like, you know, obviously, they're full with the work they have now, so. We'll do it as soon as we can.
Fine. Next is proposed farmland settlement with WTF four hundred Totoka Road.
Yeah, I think we should skip that and proceed to executive section first, and then come back out of that.
Next item, citizen statements and petitions. Cliff, you gotta have something.
It's the World Series, Cliff, come on. I just came from Billy Canning's fundraising dinner, and it was quite impressive, I mean, standing room only in this huge facility. I think he was surprised, they got in there kind of secretly, and he was overwhelmed with the show of support, and it's still going strong. The other thing was, as of your actions last week, as Mr. Capazzo, Vincent Capazzo, was walking out, he asked me, he wanted to do something for Billy, so I stopped down his business the next morning with a flyer, and I got a call about four days later, and he made a very generous donation to Billy's fundraiser, too, so showing him a little compassion on his taxes is come back to help a fellow citizen. Now, one question I did have is, the right to farm, we used to talk about this when the ag commission was still active, does that gentleman have any recourse that wants to go, use that Maria Todd Road under the right to farm? I mean, you were pretty quick to go after him, but that ordinance is to protect, and I don't know if Attorney Young, it's a Connecticut statute, and now, does he own land in North Branford?
Yes.
Okay, so he's a citizen of North Branford, so technically, the statute is general statute nineteen eighty dash three forty-one. And, you know, it, it was specifically written so that people that do move into areas and they can't be overbearing and cause this man to lose income from his farming business. So I know you already voted, but, I mean, what's to say he can't come back and appeal it under the right to farm? And I don't know if that's a, a question.
That's why we hired brilliant people in black robes and send them to courthouses downtown.
Well, I know, well, we have a local one right here that might be able to tell us, right? But it's, you know, it's, it's to, really, you know, the poor guy's just trying to prevent driving through wetlands, stirring up mud, and he's just trying to protect the piece that he owns in North Branford to get to it, and as these citizens are so quick to be against it, I don't know if they really did any research and talked to him at all. I just felt you moved pretty quick on it without them.
Cliff, I read, I read the statements. We have four fairly strong statements.
I read the statements, and I don't know if you have, but it, it, it made sense to me.
Right to farm statement?
No, no, no.
Statements from the neighbors.
Statements from the neighbors, and we would not act on this, if you recall, until we did hear from the neighbors.
Okay, but again, hearing from the neighbors to make a decision is one thing, whether the state statute protects him, all he wants to do is farm, and he's got a right to farm in the state, and if he needs a path into this property, which is in our town, you also have to protect his interests.
Cliff, he was here last time.
Cliff, he's got a path in the property.
He has a path on the side of his house.
He has a path, both, both from the North Branford end.
Yes.
And from the Wallingford end.
Right, now, if you remember.
He simply wants this, this as a convenience for him, which is his words.
Right, because if you listen carefully, and I watched, I went to the videotape, he intends to sell the piece of property where he now has access. And in his fairness to him, again, remember, he owns property in North Branford, he's a taxpayer here, so you gotta protect his interests as well. I felt that because most of his property was in Wallingford, maybe you felt he was more a Wallingford citizen than North Branford. But again, he's got farmland, he has to drive through wetlands to get to the North Branford side, and he also wants to sell a house, and to have an easement through it, he'll never sell a house for anywhere as near where he could probably get for it on fair market. If you have an easement to a piece of property, it makes it very ugly to try to sell it. So in fairness to him, I think you really should look into the right to farm, or have Attorney Young look into it, and see if he's got a good fight there. I mean, sure, the neighbors are gonna complain, I mean, you handed them a gift, so naturally they're gonna say no. But I think you really got to look further down the road, and look at that statute, and see if he's got a right to make a living off the property he's being taxed on in North Branford. He's not looking for anything special, he just wants to get in and out of there without having to go through a river, and he wants to sell a piece of property without an easement on it. I mean, I didn't think it was gonna be this big a deal to get denied. But again, it's the same old thing, farming is part of North Branford, then people move in, and they're upset with farming. Well, guess what? No farms, no food. You keep squeezing them, if you want Chinese milk, keep pushing them. So, I mean, again, you really got to look at, you have, you have an obligation to protect him as a taxpayer in North Branford, and give him a fair shake, and I question whether that happened here tonight or not. Everybody was so quick, but I, I think you really have to read that statute and see if it applies here or not.
I don't think we were. I read the statements from the neighbors, and I skim it, I read.
Okay.
And did you hand me a state statute to look at?
Yeah, I can, I mean, it's on my phone, I just had to look it up because I was surprised.
We'll need a legal interpretation if it ever gets to that.
Well, again, I think you should do your homework, and, I mean, he wasn't here to defend himself, I know, but it's, like I say, I don't know much about, but it, it says, state's right to farm statutes. Under, and I won't hold you up too long, notwithstanding any general statute, blah, 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 no agriculture, farming, or generation place, blah, 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 you know, you, they can't harass him about noise and stuff to make a living. Can you clarify it, Mike, in better words? I mean, you've been in the agricultural business long enough.
Yeah, but I haven't read that statute, so.
Okay.
I, I think, you know, Michael, look it up and print it out for us.
Yeah, I mean, I, I. I almost, I was upset that you acted so quick, because really, we have, you know, I still care, I'm not on, you know, the agriculture commission's kind of gone defunct, but I think we owe this gentleman, and I didn't know whether he owned property in North Branford at all or not, but the fact that he does makes it even more so, I mean, he's a taxpayer in this town.
I don't, I don't think we were quick to act, I think we, we read the letters and the comments very carefully, and I think if you'd seen some of the comments from some of the neighbors.
Well, we never see anything, that's the problem.
No, I understand that, but what I'm saying is, we, we were not quick to act, I think.
If we were quick to act, we would have done it last week without hearing the statements.
The whole thing about it, my point is, he has another access in there, from Northford. If he sells a house, and he doesn't have that right away or access in there anymore, then he could come back to us and say, listen, I don't have another way to get in, I'd like the...
then he could come back to us and say, listen, I, I don't have another way to get in. I'd like to use that, you know?
Yeah, but again, I mean, neighbors-
I mean, to, to say, no, you know, we're gonna overlook four or five neighbors and say, no, because you have a right to farm and you have another access in there, we're gonna, we're not gonna approve this access.
Okay, well, seeing how, again, I have to act without seeing everything you get to see. Were they really upset about it, or what? What were their statements?
There were a, a lot of issues.
Probably easier if you read them, Cliff. I mean, it's public information. You can get a copy of our agenda with a backup.
But please, no, we, we did not act on it the last meeting because we didn't have the neighbor's statements. Once we had the neighbor's statements, we can make a, a fair decision, which is what we did.
Okay. I wish I'd come up earlier, but do you know about the right to farm law?
No.
Okay. You're, you're actually dipping your hands into his wallet and taking, you know, it's a right to farm to make a living, and it had to be drawn up, because this is exactly what happens. It's like the person who finds the house next to the airport, knowing that airplanes, and then he wants to stop the airplanes. Farmers have a right to make a living. And state realizes it so much, they've, all fifty states have a, a statue about it. So again, I, I just was upset that you really didn't know that and still made your decision. I don't think you had all the information to make a decision. I mean, I've made statements about my neighbor. Nothing's ever been done about him. It's still an ongoing situation. And we went through lots of stuff, Mr. Kotlik. I could go there, but we won't go there. But again, so you just, you have to be careful how quick you do things sometimes. I think there was just a, a one more meeting might have straightened this out a little bit more. So, just a thought. Thanks.
In motion, move in, executive sessions.
So move.